Good evening, welcome to the regularly scheduled May 20th meeting of the East Bridgewater Planning Board. We'll declare the meeting open at 7:02 PM. The board this evening consists of regular members Diane Phillips, Rachel Tedesco, Roy Gardner, newly elected regular member Miles Heager. Congratulations to Mr. Heager. And the five of us will be participating in all matters before the board this evening. We also congratulate Mr. Lawler on his reelection. John is not with us tonight, but we, John was reelected to another three-year term. We thank him for his participation and congratulate him again on his reelection. We have a number of things on the agenda tonight, several public hearings. So we'll get underway right off the bat here. We have a Form A application. Well, first of all, we don't have any available minutes this evening, so we'll pass over that on the agenda. We have a Form A application for the property at Zero Autumn Way, so-called. An application from Ross Pratt seeking a Form A approval of a lot. And Mr. Gardner, thoughts on that one? If you had the plan, it appears to be, yeah, you got it? Okay, excellent. Technology is working?
So this is basically just a, a large lot off the, off the back end of the cul-de-sac known as Autumn Way. The only question I had here is that it's not 100% clear that you can fill, fit a building lot in there without going through the wetlands first. It's missing the building square, which would show where the, where the upland would be. I mean, he does show the, he does show a proposed house location, which, which does appear to be in the upland. But it is missing the building square, which I think we need to ask him to add. It's supposed to have a building square, which I believe, if my memory serves me correctly, is two-thirds of the required frontage size. So I believe it's like 78 feet by 78 feet. And that building square has to be behind the setback line. It is actually supposed to be shown on the plan according to our zoning bylaw.
Would a motion to approve subject to the addition of that information be appropriate? Or would you rather wait until?
I thi- I think so, because I think it, it's close, but I think it does fit in front of the wetlands. So I'd make a motion that we, we vote to endorse the plan of land for Ross Pratt off the end of Autumn Way, prepared by Webby Engineering Associates, provided they add to the plan the required buildings, building square pursuant to our zoning bylaw.
The motion is made by Mr. Gardner to approve endorsement of the plan, subject to the addition of the information noted. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mrs. Tedesco. Further discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Record will reflect the unanimous vote of all members present and voting. We do have a few minutes before the 7:15 public hearing. Roy, any update that you wanted to provide on, on the MBTA zoning at this point? Got a couple of notes.
Okay, so that's the bylaw, so that's not going to be overly helpful. All, all that I will say is that it's, it's going to be an overlay district, and it's, the, the bylaw is actually pretty much boilerplate. They came out of the state offices that are in charge of this, which they've said would be acceptable.
There we go.
Okay, this is a little bit better to look at. This is the proposed map. We go from North Bedford Street, Route 18 is here on the right side. The district moves west, westerly, northwestally, all the way to Winter Street, where it touches Winter Street in two locations, at the northerly section of, of the district and at the southerly section of the district. The top line is actually the town of Whitland, Whitman Town Line. So the, the district is 116 acres, and keeping in mind that the MBTA zoning requires that we allow up to, or let's say, a minimum of, up to a minimum of 15 units per acre. So if we look at the, at the follow-up to that, I, I mapped now, obviously 15 units per acre for 116 acres is a number way, way over what we're required to provide, which is somewhere in the range of 520 units. But we try to take into account, that's the wetlands overlay. So although the actual area that we're planning on zoning isn't heavily dominated by wetlands, it's somewhere between 15 and 20%. Would require a couple of crossings, since it would also require, to get to these, obviously would have, well, maybe not so obviously, but as we can see from the map, there's no roads there. So all of the work that was done in this area would have to be done under subdivision control. And as we've, we've previously noted, this is the area where the agreement has been reached with Brockton to provide sewer capacity from Brockton. The sewer capacity would actually come in from, from Winter Street via Thatcher Street and, and come in at, at probably at this top location, come all the way over across the Route 18, and somewhere in here, come down onto the industrial land. And the underlying district here, by the way, is industrial all the way to the Whitman Line. But the MBTA district would be an overlay district. Now, this is a, a potential layout of, of subdivision roads that at least at this scale would, would appear to meet all the requirements for the subdivision control law and provide frontage to the majority of the upland that's in that area. Now, I wouldn't expect all of this would be built, but depending on, on, on the applications, I, I would think the roads would have to end up being somewhere somewhat similar to this, because the roads would have to as much as possible avoid the wetlands. There would be at least a couple of, of roadway crossings. One of the reasons this, this proposed subdivision map was drawn was to stress the fact that for the number of housing units and the density potentially that would get built here long-term, we want to make sure that there's more than a single access onto the property where there's, where there's a significant number of housing units. So the intent would be to have potentially two accesses off Route 18 and two accesses off Winter Street when, when the final, you know, build-out was done, which admittedly would probably be a long time down the road, but, but we want to avoid seeing is, is potentially a single road coming in from Winter Street, which is a relatively small secondary road, and have this entire area here developed with, with 200 or 300 units, with its only access being through, through this area up at the top. That's the math that goes behind this. That's the 10 parcels that are included as part of this, with the assessor's map and parcel numbers, square foot land area taken from the current assessor's records, which comes out to be 116.151 acres. This is the table that we would use to give the dimensional requirements for the number of units that would be built in there. Now, it will allow single-family units on small lots. I think that's 10,000 square feet, although I have difficulty seeing that number. I believe it's 10.
It looks like 10,000, yeah.
And then it goes up with the, the lots getting proportionately larger as the number of units from a duplex unit to a quad unit to a six-unit building, an eight-unit building, a 12, a 10-unit building or a 12-unit building. Now, the main reason, those are the only numbers on there is, is based on everything I can find online. Architecturally, that's all the developer's going to build. They're not going to build a three-unit building or a five-unit building, because they're going to try and, and use a, an architect's plan that's, that mirror images the units within the, the building. Even duplexes do that. They typically share all of the utilities in the middle of the building. A four-unit building would share all of, all of the utilities in the center of the building. A 12-unit building will have three mirror-imaged sections, typically entry front, entry back, with all the utilities in the center. So as of right now, that's, that's the, the table that would go along with the, with the actual zoning bylaw itself. And still working on, on the downtown district, which would include the, the old engineering steel site that's in the downtown area, as well as some land along Spring Street. That's a little harder to put together, because it's obviously existing roads and partially developed.
So two things. One, all of that information for anyone that's interested is available in the Planning Board office.
Yeah, and we're going to try and get it posted on the website as well.
And then, secondly, I think that, to the extent that there wants to be revision and so forth, I mean, that really goes to the chart that you were just displaying in terms of your densities. I mean, that's the, the rest of it being fairly much, as you said, a boilerplate that's, that seems to have been accepted previously by the state that we would kind of.
Right, the actual text, text of the bylaw actually comes directly from the state.
Yeah.
So the, the text should be okay. The table, just for a little further clarity, the table, the largest unit we'd allow would be a 12-unit building, which would almost certainly be a three, three-story mirror-imaged four-unit building, which, the, the best way I can describe it is look like those buildings that are at the intersection of 106, just as you go into West Bridgewater at the traffic light.
By the golf course.
Yes. There's four 12-unit buildings there.
Yep, yep.
And, and the, the lot size required for the 12-unit building under this table would calculate out to be 15 units per acre. So that, that meets the threshold requirement that we, we allow up to 15 units per acre as part of the, the zoning bylaw.
Looks good.
The intent of the table, starting at one lot and going all the way up to, I'm sorry, one unit and going all the way up to 12, is that the way the bylaws are in development is strictly up to the, the developer and however they want to develop. If they want to develop a lot of single lots, that's their option under the law. We can't dictate to them the physical size of the building. We can only dictate the size of the lot based on what size building they want to put on it, which is basically standard zoning.
I think that's pretty clear, yeah.
And for everyone's interest, there's been, there's been multiple articles in The Globe, including one that ran yesterday, describing how many of the communities have found a workaround to what the state wants us to do, by zoning existing high-density areas as their MBTA districts, which in fact would mean in today's economy, no one's going to rip down a 10-unit building to put up a, a bigger building. At least eight communities in, in, I would call it the Boston metropolitan area have already done that. Their bylaw meets the intent of, of the state law, but clearly, when you analyze what they did, it's not going to amount, it's not going to amount to additional housing units in the community.
And that's sort of consistent with what we were talking about with the OCPC rep who was here the last time, in terms of whether communities are, A, interested and engaged in wanting to build, or, you know, B, kind of just.
Yes.
Putting something out there that satisfies the requirements and really isn't going to result in much, in the way of additional development, so, you know.
The other article that was, that was fairly on point in The Globe was, I think, a week or so ago, that basically says that as of right now, and for the, at least near foreseeable future, nothing's going to get built, because no developers and equity investors in today's marketplace are going to be building anything like, like high-density housing, given, given the cost of, of current interest rates and the cost of current construction materials. The expectation is, is those communities that, that I'll use my description, in good faith, pass a zoning bylaw to try and get some additional multifamily housing, it will be quite a while before anything actually gets built.
Okay, other thoughts or questions before we move on?
Just, I, oh, I had one other quick question. The, the other lot, the other area that is.
Downtown district?
In the downtown area. When can, we expect a sort of a layout plan for that? Interested in that as well.
I expect the table's going to look the same.
Right.
And it may use the exact same table. The map is, is still getting revised on a regular basis, so.
Okay.
But I, I would say by our next meeting, we'll at least have a map to, to go along with, with the downtown area.
Yeah.
I, I think the actual overlay language, as well as the table, will be the same for both.
Okay.
From what I'm seeing right now.
But I, I appreciate that map. I, I think that made it a lot clearer to me.
Okay.
It being 7:15 or thereabouts, we will reconvene the public hearing with respect to the property at 211 Highland Street. This was a matter that was originally scheduled for hearing by the board on the 1st of April. It was continued until tonight at the request of the applicant. Before we begin, two things. One is that, again, all members, regular members who are here this evening will be participating in the, in this decision. Just for the advice of the applicant, as I'm sure, Rob, you are aware, you do require all five votes in order to, to succeed here this evening, and I certainly do give you the option, if you wanted to postpone until another evening, to allow for the other members to be here. That's your option. But other than that, we will.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Riley.
So I will note for the record as well, that we have received since April 1st, two letters that we will accept into the record. One is from attorney Michael Kenefick, on behalf of the property, the abutting property owner, Ann Marvin Realty Company. And then the second is a piece of correspondence from Chris Legarki, who is the affiliated with Graystar, the owner, an affiliate of the owner of the warehouse parcel at 211 Highland Street. Those both will be entered into the record, and they have been made available to all of the board members. So at this point, last time we opened the hearing, we took no testimony, so a blank slate, and Mr. Pellegrini, floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Chairman Riley. Once again, Robert Pellegrini, on behalf of the applicant. I'm just going to give a very quick introduction of the people that are going to be speaking to you tonight. We have Chris, as you just mentioned. He's the Senior Director of Development for Graystar. We have Brittany Gessner, Director of Land Development for VHB. Matt Keely, Traffic Engineer for VHB. I know you two have met him before, when he was speaking on behalf of this project originally. And just a quick intro, April 8th, 2022 was the site plan review approval, and then September 15th, 2022, was the amended special permit. And we, we attended the track meeting on January 3rd of this year. So with that, I'm going to turn it straight over to Chris, so he can get into the details.
Thanks, Rob. Chris Legutsky here. As Rob mentioned in the, the introduction, Senior Director of Development with Graystar. I oversee development activities and, and general ass, property management for, for the, the building and the project at 211 Highland Street. So we, I'm going to start with just a high-level kind of why are we here, right? And then I'll, I'll hand it over to Brittany and Matt from our, our VHB team to go through more of the technical details of how we, we, we think we're accomplishing our, our goal with, with modifications. But what we have is a focus on the driveway that enters Route 18, North Bedford Street. We, Graystar acquired this site with the current site plan approvals in place. We didn't design this driveway and the configuration and the interface with the adjacent property at 798 North Bedford Street. As I understand it, the history of that driveway is that there, there was, may have been a perception of conflict of, of vehicle types and, and potential safety concerns, just with perpendicular parking spaces for cars backing into what will be a driveway with heavy trucks exiting onto Route 18. So that, that is a, a design, frankly, a, a defect that's not lost on us, and as the operator and, and the, the owner of that property, we've been focused on trying to figure out how do we improve it. We've spent a, a, a good bit of collective engineering efforts between ourselves and, and the, the ownership and engineering team at 798 North Bedford Street, to try to figure out if there's a better way to, to solve that puzzle. So that's effectively what we're here to, to present today. We think there's a solution. We think we've been able to achieve clean separation of the, the heavy trucks from the passenger vehicles that will be parking in the, in the adjacency or proximity of the driveway. And we're, we're really happy about that. I think that, you know, there, there is a current restriction on that driveway under our site plan approvals. So just a recap on that. That driveway is only to be used for vehicles exiting the property, and there's a cap of 25 trucks per day that can use that driveway. From my perspective, 25 trucks per day is still a, a enough vehicles that I, I don't, I don't think that, that completely eliminates the issue. It mitigates it, surely. So I, you know, I, I understand the rationale there, but I think that physical separation and proper signage and really making it impossible for the cars to interact with the trucks is the right way to do it. And we're, 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 you know, we're, it's, it's been tight in terms of dimensions here, but I, I am glad to say we, we think we've achieved that separation, and we'll, I'll let the engineering team walk through that. The other piece of, of sort of operational challenge that we've been dealing with is what that restriction on truck flow means for our prospective tenants at our, our warehouse building. So we are out, Graystar is out, and we are looking for an operator of that building. The building is currently vacant. We've had discussions with some, some great businesses who, who may, may call that building home. One piece of feedback that we've gotten is that, that, that restriction on trucks exiting onto Route 18 is an operational shortfall. It, it, it means that the trucks that are entering off of Highland Street are forced to do essentially a three-point turn and exit back to Highland, which is, which is conflicting with trucks coming in. So these are, these are functional buildings, you know, you're navigating a, a long 53-foot trailer. The intent is really to streamline the traffic so that the vehicles are all moving in the same direction, which is why you often see these looped roads on these warehouse buildings. So entering in one location, exiting off the other. So that is the other piece. Other than the physical modifications to the property, that's the other piece that we're looking to modify in our site plan approvals, essentially eliminating that restriction on the number of trucks that could exit. We are still proposing that that driveway be for exit only, that employees use the Highland Street entrance as well. So really driving as much of the, the traffic towards Highland Street on, on the inbound direction as, as we can, and then limiting the driveway to exit for trucks, but lifting the 25 vehicle per day restriction if we achieve this, this physical separation that we're proposing. As far as the letters go, the, the second letter, Mr. Riley, that you mentioned, that was for me, from, from my perspective, you know, I'm, I'm happy to spend time talking on that matter. I, I struggle to see the relevance to what we're talking about today, but nonetheless, we want to be transparent about what's going on there. There is an active dispute that's with the land court. We're actively trying to work through mediation and, and find a, a solution here. I, I don't want to distract the conversation today any, any more than is necessary, but I am more than happy to field any questions or, or discuss that, that point to the extent that the board would like to.
Okay.
So I, I'm, I'm going to, if there's, unless there's any questions for me, on behalf of ownership, I'd like to turn it over to Brittany and Matt to talk about the engineering implications and traffic implications of what we're proposing here.
Any questions from any members of the board, for, for chairman?
Um, just one that I wrote, but I, maybe they'll be answering it. If you did lifted, if you did lift the 25 limitation, how many would you foresee exiting?
I think that's something that they'll talk about with the.
They're going to talk about it, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and as far as, at least from my perspective, as far as the Ann Marvin matter is concerned, unless there's somebody here in the audience that, you know, is going to speak at the, you know, the public comment section, I'll, obviously we'll take note of what's there, and I don't, unless one of the other members of the board wants to spend any time on it, I don't think I particularly do, so. Okay, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Matt Keely, Traffic Engineer with VHB. I just wanted to touch on a few of the traffic issues that we've talked about with this access over the last, I don't know, six to eight months or so. We had originally started talking about this in the fall of last year, and we issued a memo talking about the traffic implications of changing access there. We had the track meeting. We had the track meeting in January, and then we followed up with an update to that memo in February of this year. And there were three main points that I wanted to touch on, the first being intersection site distance for trucks. We had talked about the fact that it's a little bit different, the calculations for trucks because of the driver's eye height being higher and the acceleration of a truck being slower pulling out of the driveway. So we wanted to make sure that we had that same visibility for trucks that we are providing for cars and make sure that it was safe for a truck to turn left out of that driveway. And we did show that, that we do have adequate site distance there. In terms of site driveway volume increases, which I think is what you were referring to a minute ago, our traffic impact study that we had originally done for the permitting showed a projection for a general warehouse use of eight truck trips in the morning peak hour, so four in, four out, and twelve truck trips during the weekday evening peak hour, so six in, six out. We would expect those to be split between north and south direction, but even if, even if they all went north, that would only be about one truck every ten to fifteen minutes coming out of there and turning left. So we're, wouldn't anticipate a significant volume of, of left turns turning out of there. Another question was related to vehicle queues on Route eighteen southbound. So the distance between Highland Street and the site driveway is about twelve hundred feet. From our traffic study, we were showing a ninety-fifth percentile queue of three hundred and fourteen feet in the morning peak hour and nine hundred feet in the, in the weekday evening peak hour. Know what I mean by ninety-fifth percentile queue? It's sort of like the worst case that you see during the peak hour. It happens about five percent of the time during the peak hour. So again, with the low volume of trucks, we're not anticipating that to, to have any major impact on the, on the operations of that driveway. And lastly, just wanted to make a note that any modification we do to the driveway will require the consultation of Mass DOT and a possible revision to the access permit that we have on file with them.
So question, I, I assume that the, the worst-case scenario, northbound twelve, which doubles the two sixes, would be the same if they were all going southbound?
Can you say that again?
Well, you had said that you expect worst case in, in an hourly basis, six north, six south.
Six in, six out.
Okay.
Yeah. That's, that's, that's what the projections were.
Six in and six out.
Yeah.
Okay. So the, the biggest single problem I see that, that appears to be pretty much insurmountable is that, based on your own presentations from way back early on, truck radius exiting that, that, that roadway heading south requires a fifty to fifty-six foot radius.
To, not to turn right.
That puts you off the curb on the northbound side of Route eighteen.
For, for trucks turning right or trucks turning left?
Turning right.
Turning right?
Right, yeah. Yeah, we would have to make a modification to that driveway and have that approved by MassDOT.
So that would be a significant modification, especially since, since you acknowledged in the original application that you've, you've made that as tight to that side as you can because it's directly adjacent to wetlands?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we, we have looked at it, and it is feasible.
Okay.
To modify that radius, yeah.
So you believe that if we were to modify the special permit to allow that, you can, you can modify that, that outlet side, if you will, enough so that you actually can get a, a fifty-three foot trailer out without impacting the northbound side of Route eighteen?
Yes.
Other comments or questions from the board on, at this, at this point? Okay, so, Rob, anything else that you want to have us listen to at this point? And then before we take the public?
Absolutely. I think we'd like to probably have the engineer go through the plan.
Yeah.
Brittany Gessner, Civil Engineer with VHB. I just want to orient everyone with the, the plan changes that we're proposing. This plan that you can see here, actually, most of this plan is on the seven nine eight North Bedford Street property, which is the abutting property. There's a, a dark black line right here through the middle of the driveway. That's the property line. The applicant for this proposal owns two eleven Highland, which is on the, the page south side here.
Oh, okay.
The, the warehouse that is owned by two eleven Highland Street is actually off the page here to the left, and the intersection, the curb cut with North Bedford is just off the page to the right. The, the approved plan that's in place right now that Chris was describing earlier actually is perpendicular parking here, which supports the seven nine eight North Bedford Street property, these two buildings. And those parking spaces would back directly into the drive aisle that can be used by the two eleven Highland Street property. So what we are proposing is actually a physical barrier. We're proposing to reorient the parking here. What you can see here is actually parallel parking. I believe an alternate plan has been submitted by seven nine eight North Bedford Street, which you'll hear next, based on recent discussions with the planning board, that these will actually be angled parking here, still physically separated from the drive aisle, so that cars can use this parking back out of their space and then pull into the drive aisle using an intersection, which would be a much safer condition. So that's the second part of what we're proposing, is we're proposing to improve the safety here of the parking for this facility, physically separate it from the drive aisle that will be used by two eleven Highland. And then because that safety is improved, we'd like to remove the restriction on, on the trucks leaving the curb cut. And Mr. Garner, to answer your question, we have modeled truck turns leaving this curb cut, both right and left. We have, we, we can provide that if the planning board would like, but demonstrating what the truck movement would look like, both turning right and left with the minor curb cut modifications we're proposing with this.
Well, well, southbound certainly is not a minor modification.
It's, it's widening. It's, it's just flattening the radius a bit.
By quite a bit.
I, I, I don't think it's that significant of a change, but I'm, I'm happy to, to submit it.
It's got to, it's got to go back some thirty-two feet.
No, I don't think so.
Would you like then to put on the screen your plan?
Um, it, it might be helpful. It, it just zooms out a little bit. I don't know if the, my description, if, if everyone followed my description, is familiar with the, the site and the scenario.
Are, are the board members that weren't here for the original approval?
It's not here.
Yeah.
Well, I guess, I guess part of the problem we have is, is I can't quite picture how you're going to modify that without first going to conservation and, and Mass Highway to get the approvals needed from both of those. Because there's a significant impact on the wetlands. The wetlands go right to Route eighteen, and, and that, that outlet is just, just to the right of that, and the wetlands are right against the roadway there. I mean, that's the wetland line, that blue line.
We, we have studied it, and I'm happy to, to provide to you the, actually, if you can pull up the plan that we submitted.
I think it, it needs to go two places before us. It needs to go to Mass Highway and get approved, and it needs to go to conservation and get approved. Because we can't approve it until both of them approve it.
It's already in our access permit?
Yeah, we, I think we need to deal with the condition here before we address it with Mass DOT.
I, I, I don't think I'm willing to do that as a member of the board. I'm not, I'm not willing to say what, that we'll go ahead and say, okay, and then you have to go through both conservation and Mass Highway to get that done.
I don't know who has control of the screen. Are you able to pull up the plan that we submitted as part of two eleven Highland?
Is it embedded in that, that fifty or sixty-page document?
No. It's, it's not in there.
Because the plan that we submitted does show the, the curb cut modifications that we're proposing.
It would be in the two eleven.
That's what I think. I'd need a better map.
But that, yeah.
This is what we submitted.
Yep, that's it.
Yeah, so if you can zoom into the, the, these are the changes that we're proposing to the curb cut, and, and we have modeled this with a full-size tractor-trailer truck to demonstrate that this right turn out does work. And all these improvements are outside of the wetland line. This is the last wetland flag, and then this is the new curb line that we're proposing. And we don't disagree that we need to amend our, our Mass DOT access permit, which we fully intend to do. If we can't do that, then we can't incorporate these changes anyways. We'd be happy to have that as a condition, I expect.
Can you point out for the board where the existing curving is?
Sure. So it's this, we're proposing, this is the existing curb line. The currently approved curb line unfortunately is not shown in this plan, but the, the dark line is the, the improvements that we're proposing. It's just a, a bit of widening.
So if I'm understanding, we're talking about this width right here?
Yes, correct.
Aside from, excuse me, traffic that is exiting, going southbound, making a right
turn, how do you allow for tractor-trailers pulling out and making a northbound turn into traffic that may be coming at speed from the Highland Street intersection?
Yes.
When you say, how do we plan to accommodate it?
I mean, I, I picture, okay, I'm driving along, I travel that road very regularly, traveling along through the intersection. The next thing I know, I've got a fifty-three foot tractor-trailer truck pulling out in front of me, making a left turn.
They have to wait for an adequate gap in traffic, just like everybody else?
Option.
Yeah, I mean, and I think just one of the other benefits we see from allowing that left is currently those trucks have to exit Highland Street and then go to the signal and take a left to go northbound.
That was designed, yeah.
Right. So I think there's a benefit to taking those trucks out of that signalized intersection and putting them on Route eighteen directly.
Except potentially when they're taking Highland Street, which was the intent of this to begin with, is that when they're entering Route eighteen and heading north, there's no conflicting traffic driving forty-five miles an hour coming up northbound. That's the purpose of going there to begin with, and that was the whole reason to do that. And that was the reason that was, that was discussed multiple times in the original public hearings.
And, and we heard concerns about the signal, and we, we thought that there would be a benefit of removing those trucks from that signal.
The concern we had was if the signal needs to be modified to give them more time to get out, then that needs to be done through Mass Highway, and certainly that could be done. I, I see no benefit to putting them into an, basically an unsignaled intersection where you're potentially crossing traffic that in both directions is going forty-five miles an hour, as opposed to coming through a signalized intersection.
Well, I mean, sorry. Go ahead.
I, I don't, I, explain how that's an improvement.
I mean, they, they can wait for a gap in traffic. I mean, if this is, we're talking six trucks during the, during the peak hour. So over the course of twenty-four hours, it's not that many trucks per day making that movement. And they're not always making it during peak times either. And there is very good visibility in both directions for vehicles turning out of, out of that driveway.
So what, what would you do if we were to approve that, the modification of the special permit but said you're not allowed to use that, that exit between the hours of four and six in the evening and between the hours of seven and nine in the morning?
That would be.
The morning's not quite as bad as the evening. The evening's a disaster there. Because the evening, every hour, you've got some hundred or more cars entering and exiting that site, every hour hourly.
That would be a question for, for Chris.
Yeah, so, couple, couple questions, maybe, Matt, to help me understand just some of the analysis here. The, the sightline analysis that you, you run or that, that sort of the state or the federal regulations call for, can you just help me understand whether they factor in vehicle speeds and concerns about, you know, a forty-five mile an hour car are part of that calculus? Or is that, is there some concern that the sightline calculation may not be considering that?
Yes, no, that is the main factor in the sightline calculation, and it's based on ASHTO Design Manual, and it's based on the eighty-fifth percentile speed of Route eighteen, which I believe is forty-seven miles an hour. And that's factored into how long it takes the truck to pull out and not have vehicles have to slow down more than eighty percent of their speed so that they can get into the lane and continue on Route eighteen. So that calculation is one we updated to B four trucks, which has the slower acceleration accounted for in the calculation, as well as the different driver eye height. So speeds are, are the main part of that calculation.
And as far as hours of operation go, are those, I'm sorry, Mr. Garner, the, the hours you proposed, could you repeat those, please? I just want to understand how those line up with the peak hours that, you know?
They are the peak hours according to one of your previous studies that we were giving.
Yeah, seven to nine and four to six, so the typical morning and evening commute periods that we address.
I, I think it's, you know, it's, it's, it would be tough to say exactly what hours, you know, are, are going to have less of a concern or more, and whether or not those, the incremental truck traffic during peak hours is different enough, right? I know in an analysis, it, it shows certain numbers in peak hours versus others, but the reality is you may have an operator who's busiest between eleven and one, right? And, and, and maybe that's just how their business, their, they flow, and, and maybe they have less traffic during the afternoon hours or the morning hours. So, so I, I, I tend to, to struggle with hours of operation or restricted hours of operation, especially in a condition where we don't have signalization or other ways to enforce that. It's, it's just very difficult for us as landlord and not ultimately the drivers of those trucks, right, to, 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 to really mandate. I think the best that we can do is just make it very clear-cut what is permissible or not, and our experience is just hours of operation are, are a tough one to, to impose.
So let me, let me ask, or say first that, from my perspective, certainly a, a four hundred thousand square foot warehouse sitting empty benefits no one. So I'm interested to know how many lease opportunities have been lost as a result of this issue? People who would say, yep, I'm going to sign on the dotted line, but?
Yep. We haven't gotten to that level of, 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 I'd say, clear-cut negotiations with anyone. This has not been a deal killer, to be clear.
Okay. So my other comment then is that it sounds to me, from what everybody has said here tonight, that we're, we're sort of making a request that deals with internal site safety that is being translated or, or transferred into an issue that affects Route eighteen, and I think in a bad way. And, I mean, I've only been in there a couple of times, but I'm, I'm, I'm having trouble envisioning what is being suggested as far as why. I mean, I understand you've got, it's, it's an enormous site. I mean, you've got, you know, from one side to the other, but I'm just not understanding the idea that it becomes an issue for trucks traveling within the site opposing one another.
Sure.
And where that becomes a problem.
Yeah, I don't have a very good graphic for it. But, but basically, if you have, you know, the trucks coming into, to, to the property from, from Highland Street, it, if you have a truck that is backing up this way and then opposing them, that is, that is, it creates more of a blockage and conflict than somebody backing up and going the same direction, right? So it's a, it's a, it's, to have everyone sort of swimming in the same direction, right, and, and operating these vehicles and swinging, swinging them in the same direction is, is, it just presents less instances of conflict or, or sort of navigation challenges than if you have them doing this, right? And potentially a truck that's pulling into a loading position and another one backing out this way, we just, we try to eliminate crossing of them, right? Because the loading, you may have a truck who's loading way over here, right, and pulling in over here while somebody is, you know, backing out this way, right? So you could potentially have a, a truck swinging this way while another goes out this way. And if this, if this truck is backing out this way, that's, it, it just, it reduces that, that potential for the conflicting tractors. Does that make sense? I know this isn't.
In, in a general sense, it does, but I, you know, I, I would have to, to actually take a look at that.
Yeah.
Again, to, to, to more fully understand that. I mean, it just, it's, I mean, there's got to be, what, how many doors are there? I mean, there's a.
It's about fifty.
Yeah, I was going to say forty, so I'm seeing over that.
Fifty-nine, yeah. Right. Which is why, again, it's, you know, we're just trying to, just trying to streamline it, right? And, and, and present, for these drivers, you may have drivers who haven't been to the building before, right, and, and they're making a delivery, and we just don't want them to experience something they're not used to. So I, I will say.
Who are then, who are then not, not pulling out onto Route eighteen and not, not necessarily following the rules there either?
Yeah, and, and just, I mean.
You know, again, I, I think what, you know, Matt's saying and what you're saying applies, you know, very nicely in, in the, you know, the sort of the abstract, I think, you know? And, and in the real world, I think, you know, you've got drivers who And in the real world, I think, you know, you've got drivers who obviously are going to drive as they do. You know, a lot of truck drivers, in my experience, are sort of aggressive drivers, but...
Yeah, and it doesn't, just to be candid, it doesn't benefit us if we're presenting a tough exit maneuver for the drivers, right? We don't want to hear from our tenants that their truck drivers are getting honked at and, you know, or getting into fender benders or, you know, whatever else. It's, if, you know, if there was an engineering concern there, we would not be interested in it. It just, you know, it's not, we, you know, we're, it's not like we have sort of a, sort of an isolated user who's driving some kind of ask here, right? I think we're just trying to conform to sort of the engineering standards and what these buildings typically offer in terms of maneuvering and restrictions and that's all.
Rob, do you want to offer anything else before I let the public have some comments, if there are any?
Unless you need, or the board would benefit from a clarification of the specific conditions that we're pointing to...
No, I think, let me have the public, and then if you want to add something on the board...
Can I just, one follow up to that? I don't see the picture where trucks are backing out into oncoming trucks. Every warehouse I've ever seen, including the layout for this one in the original traffic flow, which was intended to have the majority of the trucks, you know, enter from the Route 18 side and go through, they're backing up only to go to the dock. When they're leaving, they're pulling straight out from the dock, they're not backing out anywhere. So I don't understand what that comment meant.
We do have trailer storage opposing the docks as well, so they could be oriented in different directions. But I agree, I get, you'd be backing into the dock, but I think the same concept applies where you'd want everyone to be sort of maneuvering in the same direction.
Which is why the majority of the traffic came in off Route 18, looped around, went out to Highland Street in the original design. You're basically saying now you want to effectively reverse that.
I don't know if the original, we have the current design, I suppose. If the original design had exiting off of Route 18, that's not, today we can't exit off 18, or, I'm sorry, we can't enter on, off of 18, right? There's a restriction, we have to enter off of Highland Street. If there's more discussion or concern about the maneuverability out of the driveway on Route 18, I appreciate the feedback, and I, just given that we need a unanimous vote, my hope is that we're all sort of understanding whether or not this is a maneuver we're comfortable with or if we need to take something like an hours of operation or other restriction into consideration. We could, I'd rather understand that than, you know, sort of not be able to move forward with any piece of this proposal.
Okay, so let me ask if anyone in the audience would like to participate and has a comment on this matter. If so, please identify yourself by name and feel free to speak up and draw our attention. Sir?
Sure, John Bradley and Marvin Realty Company. Two questions I have, is obviously snow's going to be an issue. If they tighten this up, what happens to the snow on the site? The parking area, the storage trailer, they have a separate access point they could change on the lot or, so they can control everything with on the site going in or out? Safety reasons, the other question I have is, when they expand Route 18, what's that going to do to the curb cut? And how's the layout if it's a four lane road at that point? Again, traffic signals will have to be redone. So we're putting a traffic signal here and then having one at Highland? Or doing the original proposal, which makes more sense, more safety to divert the traffic to where it's supposed to go? Use the light, take a left or right at that particular point and keep the flow from that narrow roadway that's going to be even narrower by the time you put a retaining separation and change the parking spaces with no adequate storage for snow? Or is it a full removal? So those are a couple of questions as far as, there should be some additional expansion between the curb cut to accommodate for snow. Obviously this year we didn't have any. But I can remember times plowing the Foxborough Company, we had three feet of snow. You have three feet of snow on that site there, coming out of that entrance, you're going to have a problem. So those are a couple of questions just to take under consideration.
Gentlemen, any comment on any of that, Matt, or anybody?
I can take the two of them and then you can talk about signal warrants. We're not proposing an expansion of pavement anywhere. We're really just proposing a change in striping and a change in operational use, so I don't anticipate any additional snow storage required beyond what's already being proposed across the site. So I think that responds to the snow question, and then regarding curb, this is the modification to the curb cut that we're proposing. Again, I'm happy to follow up with graphics that illustrate the modeling of the truck turning using this modified curb cut. And then I assume you can speak to signal warrants?
Yeah, there's no plans to widen Route 18, there's no plans to install a signal. The signal would not be warranted at that intersection. And there's no warrants to widen Route 18 either. So it will remain in its current form.
Other comments from the members of the audience? Third and final time, any other comments from members of the audience? Chair would entertain a motion to close the public comments section of the hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Heager, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gardner, all those in favor of that motion to close public comments, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Other comments or questions from the board?
Boy, I know you had mentioned a delay from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM and then 4:00 to 6:00 PM. You know, as somebody who goes up and down that road, you know, I know the traffic is kind of backed up at that point, both points of that day. Is that something that the board has already discussed? Or is it for discussion going forward?
Well, it was discussed way back when we did the original special permit, which was the one that basically stipulated that there'd be a limitation on what can go out of that driveway directly onto Route 18. But that raised an interesting question that I meant to ask the applicant and that for at least a week, and I don't know if it's still there or not, but for at least a week, there was a, clearly a professionally installed traffic count meter just up the road in East Bridgewater from that site. And I was wondering if it was one of your operations that put it there? And if it wasn't, it had to be the state.
It would be most likely Mass DOT unless there was another developer doing something on the corridor, up or down the corridor.
But I know they've been looking at that traffic light and trying to get a better handle on actual current traffic flow through Route 18. Because they've been looking at, addressing the somewhat obtuse angle that those roads cross at that traffic light. Okay, that was kind of... Okay. But the answer to that was, yeah, we had looked into that. And we know that there's multiple times in the afternoons, especially Thursdays and Fridays, for whatever reason. Especially during the afternoon hours when the, now that the gym in the gymnastics studio that are on that site are fully open, traffic in and out of that site as well as the traffic on Route 18 does back up actually well beyond this. Three nights that I looked at it, it was up to the cowwash for a matter of 20 or 30 minutes.
All it takes is an accident for it to be into Whitman, too, so...
Yeah, I mean, or if there's an accident, then, you know. That's all I have, I don't have anything else at this point.
Rob, did you want to address anything else? You had said you wanted to comment on existing conditions or something?
All I wanted to make sure is that the board members that weren't here didn't need to see the conditions that were actually asking to be modified. I'm willing to do that if you would like.
Guys, are you comfortable with, with understanding what the conditions are? Or the one condition particularly that we're discussing, right?
I'm just, I was, could you repeat exactly?
Sure. Yeah, I can read it. It is condition number nine of the site plan approval. And what it says is, "All truck traffic entering the site shall do so by way of the Highland Street driveway. No truck traffic shall be permitted to utilize the North Bedford Street, Route 18 driveway other than for purposes of exiting the site. The total number of truck trips per day over the North Bedford Street driveway shall not exceed 25, and all trucks utilizing city address must turn southbound right upon so exiting the site." And if you want to narrow it down, it's just that last sentence about the number, 25, and having to turn right. I'll show it to you if you'd like.
It's highlighted.
Okay, thank you.
And it's really just the last sentence.
Okay.
Personally, I thought it was beautifully written.
I'm sure you did. Sometimes you need to read it, though, Chairman Riley.
This clarifies...
This is the change. This is the change that's proposed, okay?
This is what...
Rationalize it.
Existence, oh, okay.
The last sentence is the kicker that limits truck traffic to 25 trips per day out of that intersection and only to the right. So right now you can't turn left.
Okay, so it doesn't allow left turn, yeah, okay, I understand, yeah.
I felt like you needed to see it.
Right, us being rather new to this.
Lyles, you okay?
I'll take a look.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Gardner, I do want to make sure we close the loop on your question of the ask of restricting the hours. If we were to put a left-hand maneuver here, my sense is that that left-hand turn is, you know, maybe causing some angst and some uncertainty. So I want to make sure that we address that ask. I think we'd be willing to incorporate that on the left-hand turn out of the driveway, adding that into the restriction here so that during those peak hours, left-hand turns are not to be made. But again, open to feedback on that. I think we'd really like to make this a success and address any concerns. And if they're open concerns, we're open to...
We could certainly incorporate a few additional words that say if you need to exit the site between those hours, they could exit the site through Highland Street if they need to go north.
And maybe I should have clarified this, we do not want to put a restriction on exiting onto Highland. We'd like to keep that open, and if it proves to be that, you know, once a business is in and understands the traffic patterns that they prefer to go to Highland, then absolutely, right? I think that we'd like to offer them the flexibility. We just don't want to be putting a restriction before we know how they operate.
Well, I mean, you know, I think that's, you know, a very valid point. You know, taken from the other perspective as well, that you really don't have a sense of a tenant and what their needs are or will be. So, you know, to the extent that I can say, you know, come back when you have a tenant in place who's saying, my God, I just can't succeed at this location with this restriction.
So you asked a question of how many deals were lost over this condition? I can't tell you exactly how many were lost, but it's come up on more than half of the discussions. So whether it was something else about the offering, we don't know that, right? We're dealing through intermediaries and brokers, and we're, I can tell you, we're absolutely putting our best foot forward on those negotiations. But when it comes up, you know, there's not a lot about warehouse buildings that come up in terms of nuances or exceptions. And so when they're raised, they generally mean that there's a concern or it's a, you know, it's a point of question for the tenant. So it's, you know, any sort of traffic or maneuvering restrictions, they tend to be scrutinized by tenants, and we can't really tell. I'd also say that those lease negotiations are quite quick. And I don't think that we'd be offered the grace of saying, we know we can go talk to the board and we could get this approved. Most tenants, they don't believe you when you show, you know, pictures or plans of a building. They'd like to see it built, and they'd like to go in and touch it and understand it. And I think similar for any sort of approvals. I don't think we'd be successful courting a tenant and saying, oh, we'll go and get this amended, don't worry, right? So I think that would be a challenge for us. I would rather have a, you know, a less complete offering on that driveway, right? And put a restriction on the left-hand maneuver if that's the concern here than hope that someone would enter into that kind of a discussion with us. Am I perceiving the hesitation on the left-hand turn here as to be the concern? Or I don't want to sort of go off in the wrong direction here if that's not...
Well, I think that's the most concerning one. I think the right-hand turn provided those radius, the radius works and Mass DOT is okay with it, is probably doable.
If we drop the left-hand turn out of that driveway and understanding that if there's a user in the future and we need to come back, then we'd be doing that as a, you know, as a future discussion. But even having the lack of the 25-foot truck restriction would be very helpful to us and I think allow us to justify the improvements that we need to make to that driveway to separate the cars.
Let me ask one other question, and I don't know which one of you guys would answer this. With respect to the separation that's being proposed between the parking spaces at Building B and the roadway, is that a, just a striped surface with some, for lack of, just the plastic bollards that I typically see?
That's exactly what we're proposing, is striping. Eddie, if we propose anything else beyond striping such as curbing, the way that the drainage, the stormwater is designed, it all flows towards the wetland. So if we proposed a curbing or a physical barrier, it would be very impactful to the drainage system. So that's why we opted for striping, keeping it all level, and then, yes, dropping in the flexible bollards so that, at 10 feet on center, so you can't drive in between, you're not going to be able to get a car...
What other options are there besides plastic? Generally those, when I see them, they're, you know, you got every third one is broken out and, you know, whatever. I mean, they just, they don't seem to wear well.
Other options could be actual bollards filled with concrete. Other options could be guardrail. Snow removal is certainly going to be a consideration, I think, as we start to think about a guardrail that's going to impede the width that's available as snow starts to pile up against it. I think we're trying to keep the physical barrier as narrow as possible to leave as much flexibility for snow clearing as possible.
We would be happy to commit to replace any broken bollards as well. We don't have any interest in a sort of, you know, blighted appearance on the driveway.
Okay, Mr. Calagrini, anything else from your side of the table?
I appreciate the additional time already, I think we've set our pace, thank you.
Pleasure with the board.
I think at this point we should move on to our next public hearing and then, if we have further time, discuss this at the end of the meeting. If not, put it to our next meeting.
I think that's a good idea.
I'm really not ready to try and hobble up a decision here, given the...
So our next meeting is June 3rd. Following that would be June 17th.
June 17th is a state holiday.
June 17th is Juneteenth, that is correct. So that would be not until July.
June 3rd would be the day.
June 3rd. So, Mr. Gardner, I'm understanding you're going to make a motion to continue, further continue this matter until June 3rd at 7... What do we have, candidate, June 3rd? We have a public hearing already, what time, please? 7:15?
7:15.
7:15.
And then we have 7:15 for Laurel Street and 7:30 for 653 Union Street.
So 7:45.
7:45. So Mr. Gardner makes the motion to continue this matter to June 3rd, 7:45? To June 3rd, seven forty-five PM, seconded by Mr. Heager, further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of so continuing signify by saying aye.
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 Unanimous vote to continue for further consideration on June 3rd, seven forty-five PM.
Thank you. Could we get a, I don't think it has to be a formal signed plan, but can we get a plan that clearly shows the turning radius with a simulated fifty-three-foot trailer?
Absolutely.
That you had mentioned.
That will make that into section.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Rob, would your thought be to just continue the next one until June 3rd at eight o'clock? Or would you want to do something this evening? Up to you.
My gut for everybody here on the board would be to open it.
Okay.
And let Pat Carrera speak, he's...
I don't know if you want to do that. Okay.
Busted.
Sorry, Todd.
It's all right.
I'm used to the abuse. Okay, so at this point, we'll reopen the public hearing with respect to seven ninety-eight North Bedford Street. This is, again, a request for modification of special permit. The hearing was originally opened on Monday, April 1st. No testimony was taken at that time. Therefore, all members of the board who are here this evening will be able to participate in discussion and deliberation on this matter. So again, we will hear the petitioner, and then we'll take some public comment and questions from the board.
Straight to Pat, but I do want to note that Roy's technical savvy has, like, ten times in the last year. I'm shocked. Was there a course or something?
Well, Rob, you haven't been here the rest of the year, unfortunately, so...
Fair, fair, okay.
Pat can perhaps speak to that a little bit more clearly. Nope. No, he's not going there, okay.
All right, well, Roy trying to find the plan and pull it up. So, you got little Pat Carrera from PMP Consulting here for seven ninety-eight North Bedford Street. So at the previous planning board meeting, Matt Smith was in, and we had some discussion over the parking. I think everybody was more or less pretty happy with the parking layout we came up with and the reallocation of the spaces. Mr. Riley, we got some input from you on the reallocation, so we've incorporated that into the latest plan. All the changes in this plan were highlighted in red, so hopefully you all have colored copies so you can see that a little more easily. And Kevin, you were absolutely right, it was actually a hundred and fifty spaces on the site, not a hundred and fifty.
Wow.
Wow.
So we, now you made that pay dearly for it.
This is what we need, this kind of...
Yes, that's a really clear... This is what we, where I visited.
I, you know, I'm getting to wonder if they do or not. I apologize if you can't find electronically, because I really haven't been involved in this, and I know Matt Smith brought it up, the hard copies. I don't know if the electronic one was ever forwarded to Candy.
She said it's possible it was put up on the track, so let's take a quick look.
So, Pat, what I can see here in the way of changes, I can see that there have been some employee parking spaces incorporated to the, I guess, the rear, I'll say, or may be the front, I'm not sure which, of Building A, but there are those spaces that have been allocated. The traffic pattern has been changed, as we had discussed, with the one-way circulation in between the buildings B and C. I don't see anything with respect to a signage at the left rear, the rear corner there, that, for, you know, just to...
Out at the back of Building C, Kevin?
Correct.
So...
Just indicating, you know, one-way or something, because I think we said that the pavement marking, I didn't feel was sufficient.
Yeah, I'll go through that real quick. So as you noted, we have, you know, the continuous two-way traffic between Buildings A and B.
Yep.
It'll then loop around with one-way traffic between Buildings B and C. And then that driveway to the right will continue to be one-way around Building C to that back-left corner. And then that driveway come in will continue to be a two-way lane. At the back-left of Building C, there is some signage called out. There is a one-way sign at that back corner. There's also a do not enter sign. And then over behind, to the right of that, there is another one-way sign.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, okay. I'm not, not exactly, I'm looking not for codes, but for, if I looked at the sign summary down below, Pat, I would find...
Well, you could be like me, I have to keep taking my glasses on and off, so...
No, 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 I'm... Stand corrected, yeah. I got it, gotcha.
So I think, you know, where we left off was, we knew we had a hundred and two spaces allocated for all of the current uses. And as you noted, we have seven employee spaces behind C. We have eight more employee spaces to the left of B, and then five more employee spaces behind Building A. Based on the current counts we have, we have a hundred and two allocated and a hundred and forty-six total on the site, so that still leaves us forty-four spaces for any additional future uses. As has been noted, out in the front of those buildings, we now have those two striped aisles shown. In front of Building A, there's a smaller one, it's a two-foot-wide striped aisle. And then in front of Building B, it's about, you know, a little bit more than four and a half feet wide, with those flexible bollards shown every ten feet on center. As you heard earlier, it's tough to do a physical barrier there because of the drainage patents. They would essentially act as little dams and dam up the surface water. In terms of snow removal, hard barriers like bollards or guardrails make snow removal just miserable through that area. And I think, as you heard, I think a commitment to just replacing those bollards on occasion when they get broken, I think everybody would be open and receptive to that without any issue. So I think that was kind of the bulk of the changes that we made, based on your input. And that's really the extent I believe of the modification of the special permit for this site.
Which would need to continue.
Yeah, obviously, we will, you know, continue this in conjunction so that things can continue to be heard together.
I'd say two things. One is, the other change that I think is necessary on here is with respect to the parking schedule table, that that needs to reflect the numbers that have been put out by the board with respect to Buildings B and C insofar as the gym and baseball uses are concerned. We are not, I am not at least, accepting of the, or has it changed? Maybe it has. Yeah, I thought we... Yeah, it looks like, yeah.
Yeah. I thought we adjusted that based on your input.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you probably have, in terms of what's provided, but I think, I mean, do you, this is sort of setting a standard here, which I don't think is a standard, you know what I'm saying? I think they've accounted for it there. Is that still going by the spaces per... No, or... I'm not completely sure about that, let me... So maybe that, maybe I'm just, let me just look at what you had here before.
Greater number of spaces for Stardust Gym because of the more, higher number of students. Thirty-one spaces.
Those numbers, I don't believe jive with the letter that we got from...
Yeah, I mean, I guess what I'd like to see, Pat, is required equal provided on those three.
Yeah, I can see what you're looking at, I think, especially on East Coast Eagles.
Yeah, I just...
Yeah, there's a little discrepancy there.
And then the other thing that I would like to see, if others on the board are so inclined, I would like to see some relatively heavy landscaping coming up from the roadway up along the line of the new parking lot. So basically, in this area here, coming from here on up through about here, along that. So that it's somewhat shielded from Route eighteen, and people aren't looking at parking areas and...
Yeah, so the thing I think that doesn't drive well is, this table doesn't match up with the letter that we got from Mr. Smith.
Yeah, I just wrote a note down to check those numbers against that letter, and we'll certainly, I get it...
The letter had indicated that at Stardust Gym, there could simultaneously be two classes going on with fifteen student seats, which would require thirty parking spaces. Now, the numbers there aren't awfully different, but the way you got to them doesn't work. This isn't a gymnasium for public assembly where you need a parking space for each three seats in the gymnasium. This isn't a five-hundred-foot, a five-hundred-seat gym where you're going to divide it by three and say you need a hundred and fifty seats.
Okay, I see what you're saying, Roy.
Each parent has a car, and ninety percent of them have their child, who's, in most cases, a relatively young female, and they stay there during the event. They need someplace to park so they can bring their child into the building.
All right, so we want to change that from seats to, like, participants. You're right, that should not be a seat, should be somehow related to participants.
And the same was true of the Jiu-Jitsu Studio.
Yep, I circled all three of those.
Okay.
Yep.
I think the numbers are still very close either way.
I think the numbers are actually accurate to what we talked about.
They're pretty close. The numbers are pretty close to what we had agreed on, but the table doesn't work the way it's rooted.
No, you're absolutely correct. It shouldn't be seats, it should be participants.
We still have a bit of an issue, I believe, in the traffic flow, in that, especially for the gymnastics studio, and switch over time in the classes.
Yeah, I can...
There's a serious issue there.
I can ask about that. I think there was some talk that, I know it's tough for them to do, like, in a, for lack of a better term, mid-season because parents have the schedule. I know there was some talk in the future about them trying to offset the classes so that you didn't have everybody coming and going at the same time. Even a fifteen-minute offset, I think, would alleviate a lot of that.
Fifteen-minute offset would certainly help, because that way you don't have forty or fifty cars with parents walking out with their children at the same time, you'll have forty or fifty cars coming in with, you know, for the next session.
Yeah, so I will definitely inquire about that and see if that conversation has gone anywhere.
And I think we can be reasonable. I think you don't need to change the schedule until the gymnastics season, the intense time of the gymnastics season usually ends when school gets up. So maybe during the summertime, they could try and work out a schedule that offsets those, you know, those, each succeeding class by some window, fifteen minutes is not ideal, but that's probably enough to at least minimize the problem.
Yeah, I mean, I know if I'm doing plenty of dance school drop-off and pickup, that's, but all it takes is, you know, it's ten minutes of a horror show, and then after that, it's, you know, it's ghost town.
I'm doing that right now. Three granddaughters all go to the same studio. If you've got the second class in the evening, you're in trouble. You've got to drive in, drop them off, drive around to the back where you've got enough space, turn around, get in line, and wait until people that are going out go out, and then you can find a space.
Right.
So, yeah, Pat, I think that, you know, with respect to that table, if you just put, you know, the requirement, for example, on the gym, fifteen spaces, and then fifteen provided, what I'm hanging my hat on is that this, under the schedule that's in the bylaws in Section Six for parking, this would, or those three particularly, would fall under the category of any use permitted under the bylaw, not interpreted to be covered by this schedule, and that becomes planning board judgment.
Mm-hmm.
So that's how that should work, I think. Can you do me one thing? Can you work, want to work with, and just send me an email? Oh, my mind's awful.
I'll send them on.
I freely admit that. I just want to make sure we get this right coming into the next meeting, that's all. No, I think, other than that, I mean, I think you've put everything on there that we talked about last time, and...
With regard to the landscaping up there, I'll just confirm how much room we have between that parking spot and the septic system that's up front there, and see what we can come up with for a landscape buffer.
So, one last quick question. In the separation from those angled parking spaces, would it be viable to put in those sand-filled jersey barriers that have, like, feet so water can flow under them and space them in such a way that it makes it pretty difficult for someone to drive over?
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could almost, in effect, create the same type of barrier, but like you say, you don't have to have them all butted up against each other. You could still leave an eight-to-a-ten-foot gap in between them so that water can move, snow can move. And even in the wintertime, they're easy enough to move and put back if you had to. Yeah, I'll definitely, I'll definitely discuss that with the patents. I think that's, I think that could be a viable idea.
Other comments from the board at this point? Okay, so let me, at this point, ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to comment with respect to the seven nine eight North Bedford Street matter. Sure?
Again, John Bradley and Marvin Realty Company. Question I have is, there's another pad that hasn't been developed yet, or am I...
Sounds correct.
Okay, so do we know what that's going to be and what the load would be for that? I know at one point, when Rhino was involved, I think they were talking a restaurant at one point.
What did we just calculate that were going to be fourteen...
About forty-four spaces available for Building A.
Okay. So if it was going to be a restaurant, it'd have to be a very small restaurant.
Gotcha.
But that's the limitation, that they would be working under forty-four spaces and whatever use that that could accommodate, that's allowed in the zone.
Right, the other thing, too, is the traffic flow. I think the morning's probably okay, except on Saturday, based on the flow for the two-eleven project, but I think the classes are going to run in conjunction with a lot of truck, with the truck traffic at the peak, and also the classes are probably going to be at the peak about that four-to-six time, I'm guessing, in the afternoon, based on classes, and how is that going to factor in? And will the gate be removed at two-eleven so they line the site coming on the traffic flow? So they can see that, no, it's, right now, there's a gate that has a, you know...
Banner, yeah.
A banner on it. Obviously, with the banner's gone, if there's a tenant in there, you can see through the gate, but even line the site, to have that cleaned up so that that removes, is that something that should be done into consideration as well? No, it's for a safety, because I think it's...
Do we know, maybe, Chris, is that something that you guys put up as a temporary measure? Or is that something that wants to stay there?
This is on Route eighteen.
No, it's on the site, both, sort of on the Highland Street side and at the end of the accessway here. So it basically just cuts off access to the two-eleven property?
Yeah, I guess I'm struggling to understand what this has to do with the driveway striping. We can absolutely talk about taking down our banners on the other side of our property, but I feel like what we're discussing here is the proposal for the driveway, and given the number of cars that I think the board and others have raised about the uses of those buildings, that's really why we're focused on trying to separate out the cars from the trucks. We can absolutely take down banners. We can absolutely take down banners if they're needing any sort of vehicle safety or other, other issues on, on the seven-ninety-eight property.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, let me ask a follow-up question to that, which technically belongs on the first public hearing, but these really share, so. And this is a shed, that fence is actually right on, as I, as I saw the plan and looked where it is, I think it's right on the boundary line. So my question would be, is, is that intended to be like a, let's say, an electrically operated gate that is there all the time?
It's just a security measure that all the buildings make.
So, so potentially, private vehicle, the traffic, cars, SUVs, whatever else, could come in off of Route eighteen and exit through that property out onto Highland Street? If that's all open.
So cars could, could be trespassing? We'd have, we'd have, we'd have signs on our, we'd be happy to put the signs that, you know, include that, but I.
So I, I can.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I, I, I wanna leave the gym and I don't wanna go through the Highland Street intersection and have to wait at that traffic light, I can buzz right through this truck terminal and go right out, you know, so, yeah.
Sure, but we, I, I don't want that to be there, right? So we would take objection to that, absolutely.
So as someone who lives one house off of Route eighteen, just on the other side of Highland Street, who tries to get out onto Route eighteen at five o'clock in the afternoon, a lot of times I literally cannot get out, and I turn around in the Superior Pool parking lot, go down Grove Street, hook around and go down Highland Street to get the light, literally. So, I've already seen, you know, a situation where the, at that, especially the first hourly session at the gymnastics studio, where that gets backed up, almost, almost back to that gate, with people trying to get out, 'cause there's people coming in and there's a thousand cars an hour going down Route eighteen.
I, I think I'd say I share your concern, but I, I.
Okay, so just, we don't need an answer right now, but just think about that. I don't, I don't think a no trespassing sign does that very well.
I, I don't, I don't think the current conditions address it either.
No, no, understood, understood.
So we're, we're, I, I'd like to just, I, I think there's a lot of questions and concerns about the general two projects and, and, and potential for cut through and other things, but I think what we're, we're trying to propose is, is a, is an improvement versus the current conditions that we can do, and we'd like to do it. I think there's, there's always gonna be room for improvement, I think we share a lot of your concerns and we're aligned in that. I, I don't want trespassers or passenger vehicles going through our truck for it, but I, I think we're gonna be limited in what we can propose here in terms of our modifications. And I think what we put forward and what we discussed is really what we're focusing on.
Sir, anything else?
Right, well, the biggest thing is more a line of sight, it's not, because the traffic flow comes around the building and exit, I believe, onto that access road, so it's more of a safety piece, and if it makes it more of an unsafe situation, then that really defeats the purpose of asking for the request. That's basically my point. Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience, second time? And third and final time, any comments from the audience? Hearing none. Chairman entertain a motion to close the public comment section of the public hearing.
So moved.
By Mr. Gardner, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Phillips. Further discussion, none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Yes, sir.
Motion carries, public comment section of the hearing is closed. Anything else, Rob, or a motion to, to continue until seven, until eight o'clock, eight PM on June third?
So moved.
Motion is made by Mr. Gardner, continue this matter to the seven-nine-eight North Bedford Street matter until eight PM on the, June third. All those in favor of that motion, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, none. That was a motion made by Mr. Gardner, seconded by Mr. Heager for the record, and voted unanimously by all members. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
I'll look forward to the email and make sure we get everything on there that you need.
Does this go back to you?
Okay, it being seven forty-five, or thereabouts, by the chairman's watch, we will open the public hearing for the property at three-seven-four, three-seven-eight, and three-eight-eight Plymouth Street. It's a request for a one-lot subdivision. So, public notice, Town of East Bridgewater Planning Board, planning board of the Town of East Bridgewater will hold a public hearing on Monday, May twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, at seven forty PM in the town office, Building one-seventy-five Central Street, large second-floor conference room. Purpose of the hearing will be to review a Form B subdivision application and sub, and plans submitted by Silver Engineering on behalf of client Craig Windsor, executor. Applicant is proposing a one-lot, single-family residential subdivision with two estate lots conveyed. Subject property is located at three-seven-four, three-seven-eight, three-eight-eight Plymouth Street, zoning classification is residence one, shown on assessor's map thirty, lots eighteen dash zero, dash zero-two, and dash zero-three. Planning board, as required by the East Bridgewater Subdivision Rules and Regulations and MGL forty-one eighty-one T, seeks public input relative to this proposed subdivision. Plans are on file with the planning, building, and apartment and can be reviewed during normal business hours. Notice of the hearing was published on May sixth and May thirteenth in the enterprise. So again, the process that we just followed on the past one is what we'll do here, just open it to the applicant to make a presentation, tell us what we're looking to do. After that, we'll have comment from the public, and then board will comment and/or question for the applicant. So, guys, take it away.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Rebecca from Silver Engineering. Ask me why it's not Larry, go ahead.
Why is it not Larry? He's in vacationing in some sunny southern destination.
Miami. So we're here with the applicant, Mr. Windsor here, we're looking at these three parcels as they exist and roughly about six point six acres altogether, and we wanna divide them a little bit differently to create a forty-foot right-of-way for a single house, one-lot subdivision, kinda similar to what you recently approved on hidden oak estates. So, in the process of carving out this one-lot subdivision, we're gonna shuffle some land around and reshape the estate lots that exist in the existing map lot eighteen oh-two, and we're going to consider it a historic property and potentially donate it or some other method. So it's an undersized parcel, not buildable. And what you get out of that is you get the unbuildable parcel, you get estate lot to be shaped a little differently and, and more conforming on the O-O-O. You get another estate lot looking a little more normal with the forty-foot stripe, strip going to the back, and then you get this one-lot subdivision where you get a forty-foot right-of-way driveway, you have the frontage, you have the setback off of it, you have your building square, and you have a, a beautiful two-acre, one-lot subdivision. And all the other waivers that we requested, similar to what you approved on hidden oak. Hopefully that's it in a nutshell, but I'm not sure.
I think you can tell Larry to stay down in Miami.
No, no, he's looking forward to that, no, 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 he's gonna come back, he's gonna sign the checks.
Okay, Greg, anything else that you wanna?
Uh, it, like, it was in.
We had talked about this last.
March eighteenth, yeah, no, the story hasn't changed. Reconfiguration, right now, we, we have, without any changes, we have the two estate lots and a buildable lot out front. We're just trying to rearrange. Ultimately, same number of lots, same number of homes, little different locations. And the goal is to free up that parcel out front for preservation.
Okay. Anyone from the public who is here, wants to comment on this proposal? Again, just identify yourself by name and residence, and feel free to comment. Support or opposition, as you wish. Adam?
Well, actually, I have a question. My name's Judith Jones, I live at three-six-eight Plymouth Street. If I'm reading the plan correctly, this puts a, a roadway right on the edge of my property, Brookway. Is that correct, am I reading it right?
Yes. Yes, that's, yes, sorry.
And that would be for the three lots to use? Or what would that Brookway be used for?
It would, no, it would be servicing the, the single lot.
May I ask the board, I'm sorry, may I ask the board, if you switch the page, you'll see the potential one-lot driveway. You have a right-of-way, the legal ownership of the road, but you have a driveway.
Well, I was just wondering what it was.
It's just a driveway?
Okay.
If you can switch to the other view, who's in charge?
Mr. Technology over here is, is in charge.
Keep going, keep going?
One more.
That one?
Yeah, this one.
So you have, uh, you can't zoom in, but that's okay, so you just have a driveway for the, the home that would be in the rear? So, yes, it's a right-of-way for a road that services only one house, so it's just a fourteen-foot wide driveway.
What? Fourteen wide?
No.
It's a, it's a forty-foot layout that would be developed as fourteen, it's a fourteen feet, correct?
I just didn't hear what you said.
Fourteen, sorry, yeah, yeah.
Rebecca, forty-foot layout, developed as fourteen.
Let me, let me, let me quickly explain what we're doing here so everybody understands. This is, what's been applied for here is what we refer to as a one-lot subdivision. A one-lot subdivision means the roadway, that roadway has to be created to make legal frontage for the new lot that's gonna be created. When we do a one-lot subdivision in East Bridgewater, that subdivision road, in this case, Brookway, has to remain in common ownership with the lot itself that gets created. The only thing that we require to be physically constructed is a driveway, which is typically between twelve feet wide and fourteen feet wide. So there will be no other frontage use for that roadway, i.e., that, that, the way this is shown right now, if, if they wanted to come back and get another lot, which at least theoretically in square footage, they would have a right to do, they would have to come back and reconstruct Brookway into a street to make it a two-lot subdivision. And at that point, it would have to become a physically constructed street with all of the required infrastructure with it.
Yeah, I was just making sure that I was reading the, the map right.
And I think the other part of this is the other two lots, which have houses on them, were created some years ago as what we call an estate lot, which basically you have to have two acres and forty feet of frontage. So to, to get this architecture correct, they're, they're modifying those slightly. They still have their own individual access to Plymouth Street, which is at a minimum of forty feet, and they both still have over the two acres required for an estate lot.
That's what's trying to picture it in my mind, thank you.
Okay.
Other comments, excuse me, or question, yes, ma'am?
I have a question.
Name in the glass, please. Yes, thank you.
Three-six-eight Plymouth Street. What section would be non-buildable, did you say, is a historical area?
That's, that's the.
Craig Windsor property?
The middle, yeah, it'd be in front of mine.
And how big area?
It's this, it's this piece right here, if you can see right in the center of the screen now.
Fourteen, fourteen thousand square feet.
Yeah, a little more than a quarter acre.
That doesn't help me much. Give me a rough area of my.
Right, right in the middle, between my driveway and yours, halfway between the two.
It's, it's that rectangle that sits right in the middle of everything.
It says parcel one.
Yep. She's a little bit of a size.
One of the ugly trees.
Oh, is that what it is?
I thought it was this.
Fourteen, just over fourteen thousand square feet.
This, there's a house already here.
Just a historical area.
It's.
Nothing buildable there.
No, 'cause it's, it's way below what would be, what would be required to be.
Definitely.
Potential for building at the moment.
What is between Brookway and that parcel, is there another driveway there, or?
That's actually, that's actually gonna be the, the future legal access to get to this back lot.
Yeah.
'Cause right now, they share a driveway through, I think what's Craig's lot, right?
Yeah, I'm a three idiot.
Well, there's another little driveway there. That's gonna be Brookway.
Yeah, there's potentially gonna be a driveway over here next to the Brookway that goes up to that back house.
Yeah.
Assuming at some time in the future, which may be a long way down the road, a different third party is gonna buy that house at some point. And they're probably not gonna wanna share the driveway of the house.
No, I don't think they would want to, right, right.
Other questions or comments from the audience? Second time, final time, hearing none. Chair would entertain a motion to close the public comment section of the public hearing. Motion is made by Mr. Gardner, seconded by Mrs. Tedesco, all in favor of that motion, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And this vote of all members present and voting, public comment section is thereby closed. Discussion from the board, ladies.
I have two questions.
Oh, wait, wait.
I was gonna say, categorize yourself.
Historic site, there's no building on the historic site, or is there?
The remnants of the foundation of one of the first homes in East Bridgewater.
Okay, and that is?
There's nothing up right.
And is that controlled by the Historical Society?
Intent is to donate it to the town under the blanket of the Historical Commission.
Okay.
They, and I have discussed it with the commission, they can receive real property, they can maintain it on behalf of the town.
Yeah, that's what I understood, yeah.
It was marked in nineteen seventy-three, the hundred and fiftieth anniversary, there's a marker, a stone out front that the Historical Commission put up. I recently cleared the poison ivy out front of it, so you could see it, if you wanted to drive by and see it.
You took the weeds out?
Yeah.
So, okay, I understand.
I do, I was walking at the base circuit trail out back there, I noticed the markers, and it seems like our base circuit kinda intersects some of those, not much, but.
There's a couple of survey stakes out there in the main cop road, those are offset stakes. The actual line is about ten feet inside of that main drag.
I didn't know, because we could move it if we had to, but if they could stay.
No, it was easier for our surveyor to put it in a, in a clear path, so he could find it, rather than.
Most, uh, we looked at it the other day, the actual concrete bounds are about ten feet towards Plymouth Street from those two wooden stakes that you saw.
Okay.
And it's drawn on the back of the plan.
Perfect.
Mr. Gardner, take it away.
Yeah, two, two, uh, one request, that's basically a requirement, and it may well be here in one of these four plans, but I think it needs to be on sheet one. And that is that the, uh, the new, the new road being approved, Brookway, must remain in common ownership in perpetuity with lot one as shown on the plan.
Yes.
I don't, I don't see that note on, it should be on page one, 'cause where certain page one gets recorded at the registry, whether they all get recorded or not, seems to vary with who's doing the recording, but page one certainly will have to be recorded.
I believe the intent was to make sure the final mylar recorded had whatever conditions, 'cause you have to do this certificate of action, so.
I, I don't disagree with that, but it should be on the plan we're gonna approve, just so that you acknowledge that you agree with it?
Absolutely, we agree with it. And the other thought was, um, looking at what you approved for hidden oak estates, you made a, um, a requirement for an address to be specific, and so we didn't know if that was something that you were gonna require here as well. Another reason to discuss.
All right, so, this gets into a little give and take, but from, from a public safety standpoint, it, it's always been best practice, to my understanding, that, uh, that the street address be given as a Plymouth Street address, because that's where its access come from. I don't have too much of an issue with this one, 'cause clearly the driveway will be through Brookway. So if the address ends up, I don't know what side of the street you're gonna, one Brookway, a two Brookway, I don't, I don't see a serious problem with that.
Okay.
Since its access is gonna be through that, that street.
The buyer, uh, or the intended buyer at this point, requested to name the road after his daughter. So I would like to honor that, if we could at least have them, leave them with the option to do that if they choose.
I, I don't see any problem with that if you, if you.
Okay, so you're okay with a, a Brookway address?
Hopefully we, we, we do that as the final, and it's on the final mylar that we end up recording.
We'd have to decide before we record it, we don't wanna get into, we've had a couple of those experiences where we're chasing different addresses for the same parcel, so that decision will.
You understand what we're talking about, so.
More than a lot of people.
I think we can be very open to what the name is, but, but, but we wanna get it when the plan gets recorded.
Yeah, we will nail that down before it is recorded.
Second, second. Second, second question is, I believe from looking at this on the town maps, that there's no wetlands on the actual perimeter of this site.
We walked, uh, I had, um, Brooke Monroe, uh, boughtness, that, um, pretty reputable. We walked the site a week ago Friday, and she saw no areas of concern on the entire two-
That's what I thought, 'cause I actually walked it myself.
So I can, we can list it as no wetlands on-
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that, okay.
We're confident there will be no filing, uh, required for the, uh, new lot.
Okay.
Miles, questions, comments?
My question was asked right over at that table.
Okay. Sounds good. All right, uh, unless anybody else has any questions?